I am going to call the Simsbury Zoning Board of Appeals regular meeting for Wednesday, July 22 to order, and I am going to ask Joanne to go ahead and do the call for the two applications. If you want, I think if we do it from the agenda, you should be able to read the two applications.
I have it on the staff comments. That page has it all written out.
Let me just make sure.
So it's motion, it's well, it's the motion to approve or deny.
Oh, that should have the background information under the, yeah, if you just don't read the motion, I think everything is consistent with the.
I'll just read the application, I won't read the motion. Okay, all right, I'm going to start with the solar panel, application number 20-07 of Mark and Ieka Scully/Selectron LLC applicant's owner for a variance to section 2.3.1.d.1 of the Simsbury Center Code to allow eight feet in lieu of the 10-foot setback for construction of solar canopies at property located at 690 Hot Meadow Street, Assessors Map G11, Block 132, Lot 053, Zone SC1.
And then go ahead.
To me, that to me is a two-foot, not an eight-foot. Two-foot variance.
See, that's, that's part of my question, but go ahead, why don't you read in the next one?
Read in the next one? Yeah. The second one, application number 20-08 of Scott Westner applicant owner for a variance of section 3.10, no, 3.101 to construct a pool in the front yard of the property located at Two Grant Estate Drive, Assessors Map C10, Block 101, Lot 001, Zone R40.
That would be an eight-foot encroachment.
Yeah. Right, so Mark, oh, that's right, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, why don't we go ahead, we'll start with public hearing, application number 20-07 of Mark and Ieka Scully/Selectron LLC.
Ieka's name is spelled wrong on that, it's I-E-K-E, it should be, not L-E-K-E, it's Ieka Scully, I-E-K-E.
Ieka, excellent, okay, so who would like to speak on this application? Go ahead and just introduce yourselves, welcome to Zoom and this whole new world of a pandemic, ZBA meetings, you know, virtually, thank you for being here tonight, and can you explain what you're, what you're applying for?
Yes, thank you, thank you very much, my name is Mark Scully and my wife Ieka, we live at 29 Knatch Road in West Simsbury and we own the Ensign House or 690 Hot Meadow Street, and our, part of our vision all along for, for restoring the Ensign House in addition to bringing economic life into that part of town is sustainability and making that building sustainable and energy efficient, and part of that has always been a hope that we could do solar, and because of the historic and really aesthetic significance of the building, and because of some preservation easements, we're fairly limited in where we can do that, we obviously don't want to put solar panels on the front lawn or on the house itself, so after a lot of searching, we've come upon a, a location for some solar carports or solar canopies that would be behind the building and covering the parking, out of view from, from many of the streets, fortunately, the property slopes off from the building, so they're not towering over the building itself, so we feel it's a really, and it doesn't block any views from the building, or if you're in the banquet facility of the, of the restaurant on that back deck, that you wouldn't see any, and as you look out over Dino Noble, you wouldn't see any, any, any solar panels, they're all really down, down the slope, so we try to get everything really out of view and as far away from the, from the building as, as, as possible, in so doing, the, the, really, the only location, and if you have the plans, you can see there are two canopies they were proposing, one of them is pretty much a square that covers the 21 parking spaces in that lower section, and then there's a smaller canopy that goes along the southern edge of the property, and that's the one that is now closer to the property line than would typically be allowed, it is an eight-foot encroachment, or we would be two feet from the, from the property line, if you've ever been to that spot, it's a very steep hill with quite a, quite a large buffer zone of vegetation, there's a chain link fence just down, sort of down, down the slope, it's quite a distance before any Ensign Bickford or Dino Noble buildings, we reached out to Dino Noble and you, you will see in the, in the background materials, a letter from Dino Noble saying that they support this, so we really, you know, we would ask that we just be given permission to move these a little closer to the, to the property line than would normally be allowed.
So you're muted, you're muted.
Gosh, so sorry, I'm looking at the site map, and so the area that would require the variance, is that the, not the square, but the rectangular?
That's right.
Panel?
That's right.
Just out of curiosity, if you only put in the square panels and you eliminated the rectangular ones, would you need a variance?
Uh, no.
And maybe describe for me, you know, like the, the benefit or the rationale for having like the two separate grids of panels?
Right, there's a certain allocation that, that you get from, from Eversource for putting in solar panels, and the, the size of the array essentially that, that we've been given because of these renewable energy credits, is, it's, it's 100, it's 100 kilowatt, so that's essentially the size that we've been granted to, to do, so the question is how do you situate that where you're not doing any historic aesthetic detriment, and the other thing I didn't mention is, we can't let either of those two canopies stretch out into the traffic zone, we don't want to let it stretch out into the traffic zone, you can see you've got dumpsters on the south eastern corner of the property, and you don't want a garbage truck to have to go under and any, anything like this, so that was really the only location that you could put this allocation of, of solar on the site.
And so you said you've got approval from Eversource for this amount of panels to get the credit, if you, if you do less than that, do you still get a credit but maybe not quite as much?
Um, I'm not sure how that would work, we'd have to reapply, I think, I think, I think the, the, the pretty strong expectation is when you get granted these Z-Rex, that you're going to use them, so I, I'd, I'd have to go back and check with them, but I'm, I'm not sure if, if they would allow us to proceed.
So I don't know if, you know, when you were talking with staff in town about this, like, you know, a big requirement on our end is, you know, we have zoning regulations that have setbacks on properties, and to get a variance to appeal that amount of setback, there needs to be a hardship, and, you know, so like, maybe talk with us a little bit about, I can appreciate the historic nature of the building, and so, like, just being able to put solar panels on the building like you might with a, a regular type of building would not be feasible for you, but are there other hardships for why, I guess I'm struggling a little bit with the fact that there's this nice solar panel grid that fits within the setback where you don't even need a variance, and then the additional one, like, is there a way to, to move them closer together, or like, to reduce the amount of variance that you might need?
Um, I think that, I think the hardship just stems for us on the, the multiple limitations that this property faces, you know, the, we've got the, the beautiful lawn in front that is blocked from any, any use whatsoever, we've got really, the, the historic preservation office in Connecticut doesn't want us to put anything that's going to be blocking any kind of views of the, of the building, and we have, and, and the other thing I didn't mention, there is along that eastern edge, there are tall trees, so there's too much shady, we couldn't put the panels along the, along the eastern edge, so, given this allotment and given the, you know, the, the numerous limitations that are imposed upon this property, this is, uh, this is really the only feasible place to, you know, to put these.
And how about the idea of, of moving the panels closer together so they're more contiguous? Like?
Right, that, the, 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 the problem there would be that then you're in this traffic.
Garbage truck.
And the garbage trucks come right down between those two, they grab, they grab the dumpster, they back up and then they dump, at one point, we were considering that and spacing it, but the risk of those things getting clipped by, by a garbage truck is just too high, so we actually had to, you can see that smaller canopy really is right up to the edge of where that traffic would, would be, would be going, if we could move it further out, we wouldn't need that, as you said, we wouldn't need that, or if we came further up the hill, we might not need it, but then you're blocking views that the historic preservation, you know, folks don't.
The, the, go ahead, Ika, and then I have a question.
The long, the long rectangle solar, set of solar panels is like probably the best place because of that southern exposure there, it's, and it's slightly already on the hill, it's just the most perfect location for, for the, for the set of solar panels.
So how many cars is this going to hold? I'm just kind of a different direction, but I have a reason for my question.
Yeah, the, this, the, the larger array is 21, 21 spaces, and the smaller one is what, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, the larger one would be watertight, so no water, no water would drain between the panels, they would have a gutter, and it would drain right into the catch basin, because that's, that's an impervious surface, and the, the smaller array, because a portion of that is pervious, that one will, there'll be a slight gap in, between each panel, so it will actually drain.
So it'll drain, so then my next question is, with the last row, so it tilts, right? It's at an angle?
Right.
So the cars that park near the low angle, do they have room to pull completely under it?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
I think, I think we're talking about a 14-foot clearance.
Okay, that's important, just because ice flows off of them and.
Yeah.
Clips the cars that are parked below, and I only know that because I park under them at work all the time, and is there any other park, covered parking on the property? Or is this, this is going to be it?
This is, this is it.
For your tenants?
There is, there is, there's no covered parking right now, there's, there's the old bank drive-through.
Yeah, but.
And there are a couple of spaces that people occasionally use, but no, there's no other covered parking.
So as part of your tenants, this would be their opportunity to have covered parking in the winter and such, okay.
Now, do the parking spaces exist already?
They do, they do.
So, I guess then, yeah, so then, in terms of the, I understand, like, the canopies are a new structure, but Tom, from just staff point of view with the parking lot there, would that have already needed a variance when the, you know, like, the, the parking lot was put in, because that would also infringe, right?
Um, under center design, I don't know how that was established and what the historical reference for that parking would be, excuse me.
The parking, if I understand your question correctly, the parking is further back, it's more than 10 feet back from the, from the, it's the overhang, it's the overhang of the solar panels, so it's actually, it's up in the air, two feet away.
Right, so it's the, the, the overhang that allows the cars to be completely under is the part that's infringing, okay.
Right. Well, the parking meter.
Well, actually, there's no parking underneath the, the extension there, it's, it's just.
That's what I mean, the cars pull further beyond that, in, underneath.
We're not, we're not, we're not changing, we're not changing any of the parking configuration there, the cars pull in and then the panels extend a little bit further.
Further, right.
And most, and most parking takes into consideration a two to three-foot overhang for noses and tails of cars.
Yeah.
And so I guess I come back to kind of the original question, is the variance for two feet or eight feet?
So the, the drip line of the panels would be on one end, two feet away from the property line, and because of the, the property line is a little bit slanted, or it's not parallel to the, to the canopy, it would be five feet away on the other end, so.
10 minus 2 is eight feet variance.
Eight feet encroachment, I guess you would say, is that the term?
Yeah.
So that's not really, because that's not really how the motion read.
Right.
The motion reads that to allow eight feet in lieu of 10-foot setback, so that to me sounds like you're asking for a two-foot variance.
We can clarify that in the, in the final motion, but it sounds like if we grant the two-foot according to plans, two foot to five foot, then we should be okay.
See, I think I'm reading it the other way, like, if, if it's a 10.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're correct, it's an eight foot, and then on the short end, it's a five foot.
Right.
So if we grant the eight-foot encroachment in the installation according to plan, I think that gets the maximum amount of encroachment, and then the other will be done according to plan, which is a lesser amount, so we've covered our bases on the maximum.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're asking, you're asking for an eight-foot variance from the setback, okay?
Okay.
Which is, you know, like.
It doesn't read that way, but we can change it when we say it.
Yeah, I mean, just, let's make sure that we wa, watch ourselves during the motion.
Right.
Because obviously, like, it's part of our job to figure out how much we can minimize the amount of variance that we approve, so if it was a two-foot, you know, that doesn't sound so big, but being that close to property.
You honestly, because this has to be filed on the land records, you could also say an eight-foot encroachment at maximum and installation according to site plan approval, because that's going to get filed on the land record, so if you just cover your bases, it's all going to be there in, in picture and, and, and verbatim, as far as the language goes of this area, so that should help, that should help cover your bases, I know, I know you don't want to give eight foot all the way across the panel, I'm just saying, you give that maximum and then say installation according to site plan.
Yeah.
And that's going to be filed, so.
So I do have a piece of correspondence that came with the application from Dino Noble regarding the installation of solar panels at the Ensign House, 690 Hot Meadow Street, as the plant engineer for Dino Noble Simsbury site, I give authorization for the insulate, trying to read this here, for the installation of a solar project with a two-foot setback from the property line on the north side of the Dino Noble installation, I will require that a survey of the property line is completed to ensure that the installation is not on Dino Noble property, during the construction of the solar project, all work crews must not enter Dino Noble property, that's from John Walsh, the plant engineering manager. Were there any other communications from surrounding neighbors and others that might be impacted?
Uh, there's really, yeah, there's, there's nobody else that would be impacted, we've, we've, we've conferred with all of the, all of the tenants, and, you know, and they've known about our, our plans all along, and they're, they're all fine, but Dino Noble is really the, the only property that would be impacted, they're, they're immediately to the south, and they kind of wrap around to the east as well, and so we, we reached out to them fairly early, shared our plans with them, walked the property with them, and they are, they're, 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 they're fine, we, we have the benefit that there is quite a, quite an extensive buffer, and it's very steep there.
It's like a no man's land, nobody, nobody can do anything with it, it's just, except for weeds.
And town staff has not received any comment for any of the proposal, town staff has worked with the Scullies in the center design criteria for this project, so we've been fully aware and acknowledged, and we haven't had any response.
Maybe, you know, we talk a lot about hardships, maybe, do you want to just describe, you know, like, on the, on the other side, like, the benefit or, you know, why you're hoping to put in solar panels here in this, you know, in the, in the center of town and, you know, in this beautiful property?
Right, well, thank you, I would actually love to, as I said, very, very early on, from the very beginning when we put in a bid for this property, we've had a pair, a pair of, of goals, and that is to restore this beautiful property, bring it back to life, and then I'm very active in, I'm on the cleaning task force in town and very active in an environmental nonprofit and sustainability, and we, we tried to do the restoration with as eff, as efficiently as possible, it's essentially fossil fuel-free, we got rid of natural gas, we have all electric keep on, so solar was always a goal, we didn't quite know where, so it wasn't really till after the, the, the building part was done that we could start to figure out the solar, I'd love to see, and we're, we're very fortunate that where these are located will be largely out of view of the town, they will not be blocking any views of this beautiful building, and they will offer multiple benefits, one is, as you pointed out, covered parking for, you know, for patrons of the restaurant, of the, of the hair salon, and that actually has some energy efficiency benefits as well, and a hot summer day, if you park your car under there, you then need a lot, you don't have to run the air conditioning as hard, so it's a, it's a lot of, it's a lot of benefits, the fact that we're not, we would be producing elec, basically producing our own electricity for use in the building, less reliance on, on the, on the grid with all of the nuclear and natural gas plants that are, that are, that are pumping that, I would love to, for visitors to the Ensign House to see that carports are actually quite attractive structures and are feasible, I'd love to be the first one in town, it's going to be a beautiful, it's going to have a powder coat, it's going to have no wires visible, it's going to be, it's got a translucent panel, they call a bifacial panel, so I think the structure itself is going to be attractive, I know that's not your, that's not your bellywink, but I, I think this, people could then see this and say, wow, we could put one of those over our parking lot as well, so I think this.
The whole ethos of this restoration has been historic preservation, but also one of sustainability, to use the Ensign House as an example of things that we can do to older buildings, instead of tearing down older buildings to, to build new efficient buildings, that, no, you can do historic preservation and sustainability, and this is how you do it, so we're hoping this building will be an example of, of all the sustainable things that you can do to a historic building.
Oh.
Without, without clashing.
That's important.
Right.
Um, any other commissioners have questions, comments?
We're really lucky that the property slopes down, because that, it just, it's like the property saying, put a solar panel here.
Okay.
Can, can you see it from Drake Hill Road?
No.
Um, no. Bare, barely, I, I, I don't think so, I mean, it's, there's a, there's an embankment up from Drake Hill, so you might see the, the very top of it, I'd have to stand there and, and look, but it's, be barely visible, certainly not any kind of an imposing structure.
With all the leaves on the trees, you might be able to see it in winter, maybe the top, but the, the topography really just kind of drops away with the slope that we need on the panels, it's just perfect.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so what I'm going to do is I am going to close the hearing for application 20-07, and I'm going to ask for a motion, you guys can just hang tight and we'll deliberate and we'll vote, but we won't be able to get any more comments from the Scullies, so could I get a motion from the board? And again, it has to be, we have to do it in the affirmative. Someone?
Want me to do it? I can do it, I would like to make a motion to approve application 20-07 of Mark and Ieka Scully/Selectron LLC applicant's owner for a variance to section 2, 3, 2 dot 3 dot 1 dot D dot 1 of the Simsbury Center Code to allow eight-foot variance maximum in lieu of the 10-foot setback for construction of solar canopies at property located at 690 Hot Meadow Street, Assessors Map G11, Block 132, Lot 053, Zone SC1.
And do you want to just mention a hardship or a rationale?
A hardship being that, um, the, the, I was going to go back to where they had said, due to the nature of the historic building, they cannot, they cannot attach anything to the building itself, the front lawn is out of the question, and it will serve also as a sole, as a carport, which they have no covered parking at this current time.
Can I get a second?
All second.
Thank you, Ally, okay, any, you know, I think for me, the fact that, that the parking lot is already there, so it, you know, it is a, a different structure for sure, but it's not like they're creating a whole new parking lot from scratch and we're, we're approving that, so I think it should be in concert with the overall parking lot, and, you know, I do think the added benefits that they described, you know, are, are good for the town, so.
Well, and just having a covered, just having a carport that doesn't serve any purpose, this serves a purpose, and, and Mark's question about whether it's visible from the road was something that I can't even believe nobody else asked, but I didn't ask because everybody's so sensitive to these things now, but the fact that it'll be not visible probably most of the year is a plus.
I feel like you can't even see the lot from Drake Hill Road.
It's very slow, like Ika said, the slope is, is pretty steep, and, and, you know, I think that's one of the biggest considerations for us, people have become very sensitive to our vistas getting messed with, so I think the Scullies have figured out a way to do this, they are very conscious about the aesthetic of the whole property, and so I think they've brought that into consideration.
All right, any other thoughts? I will ask for a vote, all those in favor.
Hi.
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 Anyone opposed, abstained? Okay, the motion carries. Congrats, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you'll be in touch with town and they'll get you set up with any final, final documents.
Great, okay, thanks.
All right, good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Uh, rolling right along, we're going to now discuss application number 20-08 of Scott Westner, Scott, I think you're on the call, if you can introduce yourself and let us know about your application, please.
Okay, hi, sorry I'm on the road, but I had a meeting that I couldn't get out of, and it went later than I thought, so I apologize for this, basically what we're doing, our house is about 30 years old, and I've owned it for about 15 years, and it's kept, it really hasn't appreciated at all, and then we were also looking, all, all our kids are grown, but we're starting to get grandkids, so we thought, well, it'd be nice to put a pool in the backyard, the backyard to us is, I'm not, it's, it's kind of directly behind our, where our, where we go out to the, the backyard, there's a berm there, and I guess eventually it hit, it hit Old Farms Road, so I had no idea that, you know, that there was any kind of conservation there, so I've been working with Tom, and I appreciate his help on this, because it's the first time I've ever. kind of conservation there. So I've been working with Tom and I appreciate his help on this because it's the first time I've ever had to do this. So wh- while we looked at a couple of different options in our backyard, two of them, well, the first one wouldn't have been approved. It was too close. It was kind of on a triangle behind our garage. And another spot, it would have been towards, uh, Fort Grant Estate. We sort of have another part to our backyard. It's kind of our side yard. We just didn't like that because it, it kind of looked around the front of Grant's, Grant Estate. You could see it from the neighbors in back. You could see it from the neighbors on the side. Where it is tucked in now, you can't see it from the, at all from the road, uh, Old Farms. You can't see it from Grant Estate. I talked to the neighbor, uh, who's been there since nineteen sixty-two behind us, John Weers, and he was fine with it because he, he can't see it at all. Um, but apparently it does go into the easement. So um, I think I sent you a picture of, of how we planned, how, how we want to, where we want to put it. And, um, I guess without any questions, I don't know what else to add.
Um, and I think, um, you're good, Tom.
I can add a little bit to this. Um, we've been in communication for quite a while about this project and it's gotten very quite complicated due to the orientation of the house.
Correct.
He, he, the applicant's front yard is facing his road and his backyard is facing another road. His side yard is basically facing the corner and then his other side yard leaves a very, very, very small pizza pie wedge where a pool would not be, um, efficiently put. You would not be able to put it. He has conservation easements around his property. He has other utility easements. He's very hemmed in and his, literally what you would consider your backyard, the backside of your house does face the road. Um, so one would not want to put a pool in their, uh, formal entrance of their house. So in working with him, I, I pointed out that the variance might be an avenue for him. And he has gone so far as to, um, work with the Farmington Valley Health District on a full movement of his entire septic system in order to make this area viable. So, um, Scott is very invested in this project and I've tried to work with him as best as possible, but between myself and the pool company, I could not find another area applicable for a in-ground, above-ground. It, it's just, his lot is very, very particular and I just want to let the commission know that we've been working hard together. Um, between the three entities, him, the pool company, myself, and the fourth entity, the health district. So, um, with that, um, we've tried to exhaust every option that we had.
And just, just add, Tom, I appreciate that, that we, the septic tank will not be moved. It's just the leaching field which goes, it's just put on the other side. So it's, it's not a lot of construction involved with that. The septic tank remains the same. And it wouldn't be a lot of, fortunately, we don't have to go into great, a great expense on that. It's just because you can't put a pool in with the leaching systems within, I don't know if it's 25 or 30 feet. Yeah. So that's why we work with Farmington Valley. They approved it and we sent it on.
And I appreciate you guys working together on this. Um, you know, it's interesting when I look at, so in the application, exhibit three is the aerial photo of the house and then exhibit four is the site map of the house. And the configurations are just kind of like it's, they're, um, it's kind of like the, the reverse of each other. So when you're, like, if I'm looking at the aerial photo of the house where you can see the placement of the pool in the back, is that considered, and that's considered their front yard, I guess?
I guess that's considered our front yard to Old Farms. I, I never knew we had two front yards until, until two months ago. I always thought I had one front yard to Grant Estate, but yeah, I guess that is considered the front yard to Old Farms, even though we don't even see Old Farms from where our house is just because of the berm and the, and the, the trees and woods behind it.
Yeah, he's, it's the corner lot scenario. Um, Old Farms is creating a front yard out of his backyard.
Okay.
Or excuse me, it's creating a front yard out of the rear of his house.
Hmm. Cause usually with the corner lot, you have, it's like the, the side yards just get really funky, but, um, okay. And we talked just a couple of moments before the meeting started. I just was asking Tom about the exact amount of the variance. And it sounds like it's 10 feet, but can you verify that? Like of, of how much of a variance from that? So part of it.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
No, go ahead, Scott.
I believe it's right around 10 feet. Yeah.
Uh, I would concur with that. Um, he's got a 50 foot front yard and the pool seems to be located 60 feet from the, uh, engineer drawing from the pool company.
Can you say that again?
Um, the drawing that was submitted from the pool company and, um, engineer drawing shows that the pool is 60 feet from his, um, property line, abiding Old Farms. And he is in the R forty zone and that would be a 50 foot front yard. So that would mean that he is actually, no, it's actually, no, he is not encroaching. I'm sorry. I'm doing my math backwards today. Sorry. It's been a very rough week. The pool is 60 feet. He's within his building line for the front yard. This pool is just, this variance is just for him to put the pool in the front yard.
Okay.
He's not approaching in the building line. I apologize for that confusion.
That's okay. It just is important because when we, uh, when we approve a variance, it goes on the record and it stays with the property. So anybody else who buys the property. So if, you know, like, let's say another scenario, if we approve a 10 foot variance, but they really need 15, then we're all screwed.
Yeah, I understand. I understand and I apologize. I.
Yeah. So the, the motion reads correctly. It just says it's a variance to put the pool in the front yard.
Great.
So I have a question just to clarify. It's going in the front yard of Old Farms, not the front yard of Grant Estate, correct? Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Again, it's the side yard, that corner lot situation gets everything messed up.
And I don't think we had any correspondence from other neighbors, but it sounds like you've talked with the neighbors that are going to be impacted.
Yeah, John's been there since nineteen sixty-two. We called him up and he was more concerned if we put the pool on the side of the house that, that's next to Fort Grant Estate, but behind us, he said, that's fine. He thought it was a good idea.
Great.
And it looks like the motion as written just says front yard. Do we need to specify the front yard, uh, on Old Farms or? Cause if we just say front yard, couldn't that be either?
Um, that, yeah, uh, we could say front yard, fronting Grant Estate, if you want to clarify that. I don't believe there's even a possibility of putting it along the other, but I understand the concern. And, uh, considering it's going to be filed on a land record in perpetuity, that would be a good clarification.
Right. Any other questions?
Are they putting up a fence or do they have a fence already? Um, what's the plan on the?
We have to put up a fence around, and I think you have to put a fence around or some containing wall around any kind of pool.
Yeah.
They, under the building code, they're required a four foot fence enclosing the pool. And that would, um, fencing does not fall under the zoning regulations. Under most situations, there can be building permits for higher fences, but, uh, front yard, side yard setbacks, they can put it up to the property line. So they should be okay with that.
Okay. Other questions?
I'm looking at, um, your property photos on like trulia.com of your backyard, cause that's what was available. And it, I'm wondering like, it just looks really small, like it literally couldn't fit a pool. So I'm just wondering, um, obviously the pictures are from years ago. So have you expanded your backyard in some, or your front yard? I'm sorry. Your front yard to Old Farms in some way since the photos were on the website? Because it looks like you literally can't fit a pool.
No, it, we haven't, we haven't done anything, but it, it literally fits perfect in there.
Okay.
Yeah, we had him come out twice and it fits, it fits nice and neatly in there in that spot. We have a very unique, we have a very unique yard. I never imagined.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Cause it's actually, it's the front yard that's facing Old Farms, correct? Right? It's, yeah. So the, the driveway goes from Grant Estate, but the
Correct.
yard to Old Farms is where the pool would be situated.
Yeah. And when his screening starts against Old Farms, that wooded line from an aerial view, um, it starts to drop off. So they've, they're, in their depiction, they're keeping the building code distance from the foundation and staying away from the slope as much as possible. And that's kind of why it's kind of positioned where it is. It's kind of hemmed in.
You've got it tucked right in there.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions, comments, thoughts? Scott, anything else you want to add before I close the hearing?
No, I, I appreciate your time.
All right. I am going to go ahead and call this application closed and I'm going to ask for a motion.
Want me to do it again?
You are.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to approve application number twenty dash oh eight of Scott Westner, applicant owner for a variance of section three dot one oh one, I guess, to construct a pool in the front yard of the property located at two Grant Estate Drive. It would be the front yard of Old Farms roadside. Um, assessor's map C 10, block one oh one, lot zero zero one, zone R forty. The hardship being that the nature of the corner lot makes it impossible for them to use their backyard. Um, for this purpose and the side, the front yard is actually the more private location in regard to neighbors and the street.
Great. Can I get a second?
All second.
Thank you. Um, I'll say I appreciate Tom and staff working to make this fit and, um, you know, I do appreciate that there, there isn't any, um, variance to the setback. It, it tucks in there. It's just the configuration of a corner lot makes it really tricky. Anybody else want to add a comment? We deliberated enough?
I think we're figuring out a, he's figured out a way to use his property and make it desirable for the neighbors and the neighborhood.
Okay. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Abstained? Okay. The motion carries. Scott, congratulations. We'll be over soon when you open up your pool.
I will invite you. Have a great night.
Thanks a lot. You too.
Thank you. Bye.
Okay.
Um, as I, uh, had said prior to meeting, Katie, I'd like to add something under general commission business, if you would allow that.
Yes, please.
Um, Steve Antonio was unable to make the meeting tonight, but on his behalf and in talking to him, he would be open to being, um, proposed as the interim, uh, secretary for the commission um, until our regular December meeting where we can vote, um, in, uh, staff as committee head and vice and everything else. Um, so Steve would be not opposed to that. If anyone would like to please put that motion forward to appoint him as the interim secretary for the ZBA, it would be fantastic.
I'll make a motion that we put, we name Stephen Antonio as interim secretary until such time that we can vote in December for a more permanent secretary.
Anyone want a second?
All second.
Thanks, Ally.
We're on a roll tonight.
Favor?
Hi.
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 Great. Uh, that's awesome.
Cool. Now we got that taken care of.
Very good. Um, did everyone have a chance to look over the minutes from last month's meeting?
Yeah, kind of quickly, but looked okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Could I get a motion and a second for the minutes?
I make a motion that we accept, or as written the moment, the minutes from our previous, what was the date? June?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth meeting.
I'll second.
Oh.
Oh, Mark got in under.
All those in favor? Hi.
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 Any other business? Any other town zoning regulation?
Um, just, just to make you aware and give everybody the heads up, the, um, new zoning regulations were approved and adopted. Um, so they should be online. Uh, we're doing a little like clerical cleanup and reference cleanup, but the gist of it is new. That's why there's new sections being read. It's not going to read article eight. It's going to read section eight type of things. Um, so it's just something to just poke around at and familiarize. When we get the clerical clarifications done and the references cleaned up, I would like to, I will get everybody a hard copy of it.
That'd be great.
If you have it.
Yeah.
It's just, um, it, there were a lot of cooks in the kitchen on this over the last few years. It was ratified so many times and then it was finally adopted. We're just going to do a cleaning. I just want to, there's a lot of weird things in there. So, um, hopefully we'll have that, um, by the end of the summer. Um, in the meantime, it is online. If you need to reference something that's an application, um, hopefully it'll be able to be navigable for you. Um, otherwise you could always reach out to me, you know, I'll clarify something for you.
And Tom, do you anticipate a meeting in August? Do you have other applications in the queue?
Um, there is one, um, in the queue that I know of at this point. Um, so we will probably meet. Um, it's been a very busy, busy, busy summer. I looked at the applications that came in last year. We're getting, we're getting our learn and done here.
Yeah, we didn't even meet last summer. I don't think. I can't remember.
Maybe once.
And just a quick note is regarding the secretary's job for, you know, folks who haven't been on the board very long, it's not a, like a hard thing. I, I would do it, but I work out of town and part of being the secretary is that you have to sign everything. And so you have to at some point be in Simsbury during business hours to go do that. Am I right?
Correct. Um, you're not.
So it, anyone could. It's not like it's like a scary thing or anything and why, you know, um, it's just that Stephen works down the street, so it's easy for him. But if any of you would want to do it and you're here during the week and it's just going in and being able to sign it, I can do it this month because I'm around, but normally I'm at work in East Hartford, so I can't do it.
And, and because of COVID nineteen, our hours are a little weird right now. Um, we try to make accommodations, but instead of having a late night, we're doing straight sevens through the week as much as possible.
Yeah.
But normally if things go back to normal, we always do have a late Tuesday night. And that way, you know, we can make that meeting happen. Someone can swing by the town hall. So we do try to accommodate with that, but, um, otherwise, uh, as the last applications went through, I had to go and visit Steve and have him sign them. I'll bring stuff to you if need be. But yeah, bear in mind, it's not, not a tough job.
And I appreciate you guys, um, learning as we go and being up. I know we're probably all of us spending a lot of time on Zoom calls. So, you know, it's a, it's another one on a late night. So I appreciate your time and giving back to the town. So.
Happy to do it.
Yeah.
Okay. We got our favorite motion coming up. Who's going to do it? Make a motion that we adjourn.
All second.
Go ahead, Ally.
Excellent. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. Thank you, Tom and Laura very much.